This is now the first official one.
At this time, I'll call our meeting to order. I would like to let you know that Commissioner Legg should be on his way, but we're going to go ahead and start so that we can start on time. I've been reminded that Georgia and TCU play this evening. It's a national championship. So know that the business of the board is concerned with that too, even though they're not from North Carolina. But again, we welcome you this evening. And at this time, we would like to ask Dr. Ron Godbolt from Word of Truth Ministry to leave us in our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you will, all please rise.
Let us pray. Gracious Father, we thank you for this day. You're blessed to see. We thank you for giving us life, health, and strength. And Lord, as we come together tonight, we pray that you would give us your mind in every situation. We pray we will get understanding and communication through every issue that comes before us. Lord, we pray a special blessing upon this board, that you continue to bless them and their families. We spare a special blessing upon those in war-torn countries that don't have the freedoms that we have, the food and clothing and shelter that we have, that you would bless them and bring peace to their area. We give your name glory, honor, and praise for all that you do and all the business that take place tonight, that your name get all the glory from it. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
There he is.
Okay, here he is. Welcome, sir. We're just beginning to go over the approval of the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a youth association meeting next door. They had to get through that, and I'm sorry for being late here.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I have approval of our agenda. We do have two additions on our new business. One would be Item A, discussion of sales tax inter-local agreement extension, and Item F, consideration of public safety center construction loan extension. Are there any other additions or deletions to our agenda? Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing that opposed. Next, we have official comments. And I'll start this evening with Commissioner Marley.
I don't have anything right now, ma'am.
Commissioner Scrowell.
Welcome, everyone, to our latest Board of Commissioners meeting. Happy holidays. It's a new year, so let's get started on the right foot. And welcome, welcome, everyone.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I would just like to say Happy New Year. Happy Dr. Martin Luther King's birthday that we will observe on Monday. And just to make the announcement that there was an FTCC Hope Plumbing class that was supposed to begin last year. They had to delay it, but it will begin on January 23rd, 5:30 to 8:30, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday evenings. And the Hope Mills Prime Ours are preparing hygiene kits to give away for families in need on Monday as a day of service. If anyone would like to donate. That'd be all, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Like to say, welcome to the new year, everyone. And also like to say, if I'm not mistaken, today's the National Law Enforcement Day. And thanks to the law enforcement officers of our community for their service. Thank you.
Mr. Legg.
I'm running a little late. You'll have to excuse me. Glad to see those who are out with the parking lots out of order out here for now. It's a kind of a hassle, but we make it. Thank, I'd like to thank our town staff and the town manager for everything that was done during the holidays. We're working on improvements out here to make it easier for more people to get in. So just have to bear with us until we get all of that done. Happy New Year.
And did I, all the remarks, again, we're very proud of our police department. And we did have, very fortunate today that I like the picture of everybody together. So if you haven't been on social media to see the picture of our police department, you can see all our officers and staff with the police department. So thank you for all you do as we appreciate, this is our Police Department Appreciation Day. At this time, we have presentation. The first presentation is from Bradley Kelso on Frisbee Golf at Golf View Greenway. If you'll come to the podium. And I guess our Parks and Rec Director will be assisting.
My name is Bradley Kelso. I'm the president of the Fayetteville Fort Bragg Disc Golf Club.
You're fine.
All right, mission statement. Basically, what I'm looking to do is to grow the sport of disc golf and provide a low-cost, healthy life sport for all ages at the Greenway. A lot of people don't know what disc golf is. Disc golf is a sport that's played with similar rules as traditional ball golf. The sport requires a player to throw a disc as many throws as it takes until you hold on inside of the basket. And that's where you always need to be. Distance measured in feet rather than meters rather than yards. It's family-friendly, all ages play. We've currently, as of February 2022, there's 13,323 courses worldwide. Disc golf is played in over 40 countries. As of yesterday, there's 243,087 professional disc golf members. There's over 5,000 sanctioned tournaments each year that's played. This is just some demographics that show the growth over the, you know, over the last, I believe, 10 years is what this captured. Myself, I first retired from the United States Army right here. I live in Fayetteville now. I've designed or redesigned 18 different courses, including the number-one U-Disc rated course. U-Disc is how disc golfers keep score. There's a scoring app, and they get to rate courses. The Avalo in Cary, North Carolina, is currently the number-one rated disc golf course in the state. I've played over 225 separate courses in 14 different states. I've got 13, over 13 years of disc golf experience. As I said before, I started the Fayetteville Fort Bragg Disc Golf Club 2019. And I currently operate that. And I've ran over 50 events. Disc golf's been growing extremely fast in popularity. The sport is fed by a wide demographic from all walks of life. Of course, the Golf View Greenway Walking Trail would add an activity that can be popular with many families that would call it a additionally, your disc golf facility would add or provide low-cost equipment. It'd be a low maintenance cost because it wouldn't, the Greenway's already being taken care of. It wouldn't be an additional thing that would have to be done. It's full-family fun. Families go, I know many families, they go out from their little ones all the way to seniors that go out and play together. You can play in groups, you can play by yourself. It's a great youth camp activity. It's great for community building. I know a lot of places that their workplace, they will go on lunch and they'll play around in disc golf together as a team-building activity. It doubles, it can double as a walking area for people that want to go out and walk trails or walk their dogs. Baskets are easily removed, removed if you need to, take them out of the ground. Or a lot of, a lot of courses are going to have multiple pin locations where you can move the baskets so one area doesn't get completely beat down. You can move, you move the baskets back and forth so that there's a, well, the benefits of disc golf. Exercise, heart health, weight loss, better sleep, decreased energy, fresh air. Explore nature, stress relief. We've got some disc golf courses moving down there above. There's too much to read through probably right now. So fairways, it wouldn't, it's not going to be too much. It wouldn't be too much to implement fairways over there. I know there's a master plan for the Greenway already with improvements. But you can plant, you can plant, I know that there's areas over there that's supposed to have, like wildflowers and stuff like that that's going to go in. That stuff's fine. T-pads are easily, they're, it's easy installation for T-pads. When I talked to the director, we talked about turf T-pads rather than concrete because turf's going to be a little bit more natural feel over there. Baskets, they're easy to move and remove. They're locked. They've got locking mechanisms at the bottom to prevent theft. We can put them inside the, there's an erosion irrigation box, that's what it's called. There's an irrigation box that you would put it into, and it's got a cover on it so the lock would be subsurface so it wouldn't be exposed. It wouldn't be easy to cut into anything like that. I project that $18,000 would give you an expertly-designed, 18-hole disc golf course. That would include 19 baskets because generally, you're going to have one basket for putting and warming up and things like that. That would give you 19 baskets, your 18 T-pads, 18 signs with Ts, or signs with poles, a course map, and then light tree trimming that would need to be done down in the wood areas, down towards the creek. This was, this is my proposal for a design. I know a lot of this land because we've been out there. We hosted an event last Veterans Day and stuff like that. But there's going to be new things, and the ponds are expanded. And there's different things that I won't really know. I couldn't dig too much without the stuff being there. I don't know where the roundabouts really going to be on the, you know, on the land itself. But thanks off of this map of the projection of what it's going to look like, this is ideally what we can do as far as the disc golf farmers. And that's going to keep the majority down in the wood line where there's, you know, there's not a lot of traffic down there. And then we'll have some open holes up at the top.
Anyone have questions? Commissioner Scrowell.
Did I speak with you last year at a car show, perhaps? Someone, could someone approach me about?
On a car show.
Okay, all right. Could someone, someone approached me about disc golf on the golf course. I have a question about, so the $18,000, is that what you're trying to request from the town?
That would be total cost for, like, open and closed.
Is your club going to do any fundraising, maybe to support?
I could, I would, I would be willing to do anything that we can possibly do to help. And I can get baskets at about the lowest price that we can get them.
That's all my questions.
And that's, that's your biggest, your biggest price is going to be baskets, generally.
Madam Mayor?
Sure.
As we have done with all the presentations and projects that's presented before us, we have a town staff, we have a Parks and Rec Department, and we have a committee. And if anything, I think that this presentation should be presented to them. And they look at and get back with us about the feasibility and if it's a good fit for us.
Madam Mayor, may I? Financially, what's in this for the town of Hope Mills? If we're spending, you're asking us to do $18,000 upfront. What's in this for the town?
It's a, this is a sport that can be played any time of day. People can go play any time of day. It's good for health. It's good for, it's good for foot traffic. It keeps, I know that when I took over in 2019 in Fayetteville, Glendale Lake is one of the disc golf courses in Mazarick Park. There's two courses there, which we lost half of Glendale Lake. That course is one away. But that end of the park, down towards the lake, there was a lot of things going on there that we don't want going on. There's a lot of drugs there. There was a lot of violence and stuff that was down in the woods over there. And I put our schedule where we were in that park at least once or twice on that course, once or twice a week. All that stuff went away, the foot traffic. Just keeping people in the parks, it just keeps it a little bit safer. And there's, there's walking trails to go through also. It keeps it safer for the people that are out on the walking trails. A lot of folks go by themselves. They don't go in groups. And having people out and about and around, that just shows a little bit of sense of safety. And it keeps a lot of that stuff out.
Okay, well, thank you. But I think you misunderstood my question. My question is financially, how much money can the youth of the, here I am, not going to use again. The town recover to help cover that $18,000 in the maintenance over there?
$18,000 is an initial cost, and there really isn't anything ongoing after that. How can the town benefit? Tournaments. I brought, I brought 100 people here. I hosted a Veterans Day event and another event in the summertime. And the summertime event, I had 100 people come to Hope Mills to play this, this golf tournament. Eat at your restaurants, stay in your hotels, and all that. And then again, in November, Veterans Day, I had another 90 folks that came through.
Okay, let me ask you in another fashion then. Will the town receive any money back from this golf, this golf course being located over here? Do you have charged fees for people to play?
Generally, no. Generally, disc golf courses are free unless it's in a state park.
I know, I saw one of you war in National Forest last week up in, up in the country somewhere. Unlike Commissioner Mitchell, I would like for the, for the committee for Parks and Rec to hear this proposal and let them recommend something to this board.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor. Commissioner Legg, I think what he was, like, it's essentially like basketball court or tennis court. It's not a real revenue getter as much as it gives another form of recreation to citizens. I know along the military community, disc golf is very popular, so.
I've got a grandson that plays disc golf. And he's very happy with, it seems like that's his life. He's playing disc golf.
I want your grandson to go play disc golf.
I have one more question, ma'am.
Okay.
For, for the equipment and stuff, are you, is that just the cost of the nets itself? Are you talking the discs? Or is that, or is it up to the?
It's basket, that, that $18,000, and in my, $18,000 is, it might be.
A high-end quote?
That might be a high-end. $18,000 is for supplies and installation and putting the stuff in. It's not paying anyone. So generally, if, if you got a quote from, or if you got a quote from somebody else, they're going to come and they're going to quote you over $100,000. And they're going to say you, and they're going to give you a professional design, and they're going to give you all the same things as what I'm telling you that I can give you. $18,000 is, is a, is a pretty low-end cost. And that's not accounting. I mean, I will do, I will do everything that I can do with the, with our community. Like, we'll come out, we'll clear fairways, we'll pick up all the branches, and we'll cut down the vines and the briars and the, you know, the stuff like that. We will, we will do all the work for free. We don't need that. We just want to see disc golf grow. We want it to be available for more people because there's people that live out here that don't live in Fayetteville. And we just lost a disc golf course in Fayetteville also, so.
If we're, if you will, the, our Parks, when's the next meeting of Parks and Rec?
The 30th.
The end of the month, I believe.
January 30th?
Yeah, we had to change the date because of the board, the board meeting in Scott. It was August.
Since the recommendation is to go before Parks and Rec Committee, there's, okay, and there's two things that are happening is we're in our process, our budget process now. So that would be a way that you could get it in there.
Can I add something? This is not for golf, but when me and First Sergeant Kessel talked, we talked a couple times. They, they've gone through the Special Events Committee to run the event on Veterans Day. I used to live in Greenville, and we had three in Greenville because it's a non-investor sport that can be in conjunction. Usually, they hug it to the tree line where it's not even developed. So you still have a passing part, and you can still walk the trail and stuff. So I just wanted to add that it's, it's a joint, it's still to be used in conjunction with the master plan. And like you said, they actually lose the course in Fayetteville, which means that we have to, we have to build. It's something that you all release fund under the laws.
Madam Mayor. When you put it together, make it a turnkey project. All right? That means all the costs is laid out upfront, all the advantages, disadvantages laid out in the presentation so that the committee and the director can make a decision based on information that's provided to them so that we'll be informed, and then we can make a decision based on that.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, sir. Next on our agenda is a presentation from Consultant Tom Lloyd, and that's the conclusion of the overlay initiative and report on the needed of an update to the Southwest Land Use Plan. And I guess we're going, Mr. McLachlan.
Yes, Mr. Lloyd, couldn't make it out of conflict, but I won't keep too much of your time. To date, we've accomplished a goal that we set out in October, the language for the handle, the saturation of uses that we had concern with. That legislation has adopted the Voritorium Sunset on December 31st, so we're fine. I wanted the consultant to do this report because the ask that I'm asking for tonight is not adoption of this report or approve this report, but this report sets the framework for us to move forward with the update and rewrite up the Hope Mills Sports Division Southwestern Plan. I also want to sneak some, another ask in because also.
It's not a good word.
I'm also trying in the next couple of months to start a massive rewrite of our subdivision ordinance. So what I'm asking for tonight, this report sets the framework on the areas we're doing the overlays in. But this is the groundwork we're going to use to start the rewrite of the Southwest Plan. So what I'm asking tonight is authorization to begin engaging the county because we're talking to them because they actually are more interested. We aren't us actually doing the rewrite on our end, rewrite on our end. So tonight's task is for staff to have authorization to begin engaging the county for the rewrite of the Southwest Plan and to come, we're probably going to come with these subdivision ordinance first because we can do that a lot quicker. That rewrite is going to take a long amount of time. But those are the two requests from staff.
And along with that, I learned today that, that we might want to, and I know that Fayetteville was interested in talking with us about our MIA. Not, and the main reason for that is the way our MIA has been developed, that we've exceeded the expectation because our growth is much more than what they anticipated. And where they've got a 10-year block and a 20-year block, we're, that's not going to work. So I think that when you're, when you're planning this and the Southwest Cameron Land Use Plan changes, we need to also consider talking with them in reference to what their vision is too.
And to add to that, I'm naming it out. The county reached out to us last month about their making some changes to the MIA regulations. So I just finalized a report that will go out probably, we'll wait for a couple bits of information from the other department heads. But we have a report, it's about seven pages, that we put together on the recommendations that we want to add into the language that the counties do in MIA. Didn't realize it was a Fayetteville thing moving as well, so we'll reach out to them. So when we talk to the county about the coming land spring update, they will have that document that tells them, these are the recommendations. Now, when you're talking about the MIA, I want to clarify, you're talking about development control. So I can't go in with sign ordinance in MIA, but you have to go with sidewalk regulations, cross lateral access, standard suspects is very, very heavily referenced in it where that language was not in there before because when the MIA development standards were created, we didn't have a standard suspect.
Yeah.
So that report should go to the county probably. I want to say midday tomorrow, first thing, but I'll add that to Fayetteville.
Any questions for Mr. McLachlan? Or do we need to do this by motion or just?
About consensus?
Just a consent, a consensual, is everybody in agreement to let him pursue the next stages? Okay.
And what would the next engagement be whenever we're ready to start the work sessions? Which is basically scheduled with you guys.
Good.
All right.
All righty. All right, we have, don't have any public hearings. Next is public comments. And with public comments, just a reminder that they are three minutes in length. When you come to the microphone, if you will, identify yourself and give your address. And the first person on our list is Mike Gillis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. I am here to reference the rezoning project or request to take from a, take it from a P and D to an R5. And I live at 3616 Crampton Road. Hope Mills is rapidly becoming bustling metropolis. We are growing, yeah, leaps and bounds. The Golf View Apartment Complex will add another 300 residence apartments. And for those, you have potential about 600 more cars. And you times that, times three times a day, that's 1,800 more trips out of Golf View using one driveway. And during peak hours, I wonder how many of those are going to have to turn the left? That's going to be a rough one. You know yourself because you live down Steeplechase. The other day, down at the Life Center, where you live on Steeplechase, they had a competition, and my daughter brought my wife home, and just getting to Sue Check took her 25 minutes. That's pretty rough on a Saturday evening. But anyway, the original Par IV project was only for 114 residents, 57 duplexes. And that had two driveways. The Golf View Apartment Project calls for 300 apartments, one driveway. I wonder how many citizens will have to turn the left as I asked, asked before. It doesn't pass the common logic test to build a project now when all this expansion for Golf View and Rockfish, plus the roundabouts, is going to take place probably right about the same time. That's going to be a mess. And if it's anything like Camden and Legion Roads project, that took almost 10 years to complete. That's a big mess. I'd hate to be on the other end where you live. Anyway, I think what we need to do is we need to do a, an impact assessment of what that's going to do to not only this, the traffic, but this, how it's going to affect the city's infrastructure, the schools, the citizenry, and the overall harmony and compatibility with the desired vision of the future of Hope Mills. Those are your words. I think you recognize them from the city view. We're all, we all call for positive growth, but this will take away from that. It really adds no value to our quality of life. Quality of life's going to go down during those times. That's another 10 years. By that time, I probably won't be able to drive anymore. But with the current route we're going, we will look forward to more traffic, higher taxes, bulging schools, et cetera, and an overtaxed infrastructure which our police and fire departments are already overtaxed as it is. I would suggest that we take a good, hard look at it. And I do have a couple of last questions. Is when this Golf View expansion will take place? The road, the roundabouts? That's all going to have a heavy impact on what's going on down at the golf course, irregardless of whether it's building that or any activity. And how long do you think it will take for completion? And then how long are we going to take for the apartments to be completed? It's going to be a big impact. It's a long 10 years, and I spoke longer than I was supposed to.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Letgenow.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, and downstairs. My only, I have two concerns about this project, talking about ZNG 01622.
Need to give your, have to give your address for, that's okay.
Letgenow, 5758 Crenshaw Drive.
Thank you.
Concern about the, two concerns about that area. And that is first, the traffic. It's going to be a tremendous increase in traffic like Mr. Mike has indicated here. It's like double size of apartments over Part Four. So obviously, there's going to be an increase, a tremendous increase in traffic out onto Golf View Road. The one thing that I was reading in this presentation here was the comments from FAMPO, F-A-M-P-O. I'm not sure what that stands for. It says, "The new development will generate enough traffic to significantly impact Golf View Road because Golf View Road is currently overcapacity as it is existing AADT." So I'm obviously concerned about that. The noise, that's the second thing I'd like to talk about is the noise of all that traffic into and out of that area along Golf View, up to Golf View, along Golf Acres. Not only that noise will be going on, I understand in the future, there's a plan to build more softball, baseball parks or whatever over in the golf course area, the old golf course area. Obviously, a concern about that, the noise factor. I live on Golf View there in the curve and I could sit out back at night and I could hear, I can actually understand what people are saying over at the golf, over here at the baseball fields. So obviously, we're going to build baseball fields over there. I might be wrong about that, but I've been hearing the last several weeks that they're planning on building some more ballparks over there. And if that's the case, that's a lot of noise over there. So I would recommend that at least we put some type of soundproof barrier down along there between Golf Acres and the old golf course. That's the two areas I'm looking at. Increasing traffic out onto Golf View is going to be a tremendous amount. I don't intend, I don't know if they plan on putting a traffic light out there or what, but that concerns me obviously with all that new traffic onto there. And I don't travel that road, I know some of you do, but it does concern me going out from Sioux Jack onto Golf View. I know there's plans to build four lane out to 295. And I think that's got four or five years before it'll be completed down through there. I would appreciate considering, I guess you're voting on that tonight to look at. And I think we've had other people here before, meetings before this with concern about it. But the soundproof barrier, I think that would be very important to the neighborhood over there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. My understanding right now, and it could change, but the work, they've already started doing some things with utilities and they've already actually taken down a building, the old State Farm Building. So there's some things that are happening now, but my understanding, my most recent meeting was June, that they would start, actual start work now. As far as, you know, you never know with all the things that can happen when it would be completed. But you can see Dr. Dean has already started his new structure, so you can see some things happening already. Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, the next thing on our agenda, yes? Oh, yes, ma'am. Yes, we did have someone that couldn't come tonight that sent us an email. So I'll let Jane read that, Ms. Starling read that public comment. I'm sorry for missing it.
This comment is from Sherry G. Bell. And she does not give her address. And it's addressed to Mr. McLaughlin and she asks that he share it tonight. Mr. McLaughlin, thank you for the information shared. My concern is the 29 units per acre. These 29 units can be duplexes or more apartments built on top of each other, which would highly increase the amount of vehicles per unit. Number one, the area we're discussing would be 114 unit duplex for large. Number two, so this is a minimum of 220 apartments with a likelihood of two plus cars added to the traffic per apartment. Is this correct? You mentioned a meeting running on Golf View Road to the I-155 loop. Where are the right and left turn lanes to be located? Will there be crossovers in the need for vehicles? Will there be a dangerously amount of people attempting to use cars to reach their destination, then adding the additional 200 unit apartments approximately 456 plus cars into the traffic on Golf View Drive? Or this is high density? Mr. McLaughlin, I greatly appreciate your time and the information that was shared. At present, I'm even more concerned with the off, highest density zone for the area behind the golf course off Golf View Drive. Thank you for your time, Miss Ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. That concludes our public comments. Next, we have our consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that you would like moved to new business? Or do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda that's before you?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Motion and second, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Next, we go to old business. And the first thing is discussion and consideration of resolution intent, R 2023-02, amending the town of Hope Mills Town Charter to alter the terms served by the mayor and board of commissioners to four-year staggered terms as permitted by North Carolina General Statute 168-1014, and setting a date for a public hearing. And I'll turn this over to our attorney.
So I'll take this because I drafted these. The board may recall, you asked me to bring back all the different options that we had. And really, our options under the statute are two years or four years. But with the four years, you can either do straight four-year terms or all your terms run concurrently, or you can do the four-year staggered terms. And then within each of those options, you have the option of having the mayor serve two-year term or four-year term. And so all of those options are really set out in these two documents before you, or the other options to remain. So the first document in Tab 6 is if you were to do straight four-year terms with everyone serving four-year term. Just so you know what the options are. The next sheet paper is the four-year staggered terms. And if you can see in Section 3.3, this is how we would logistically go about making the four-year terms. You'd have to have, if the 2.3 election, the top vote getters serve four-year terms, the bottom vote getters serve two-year terms, and then on all terms of the four years, that starts down the staggered path. And then, you know, it's the will of the board as to whether to have the mayor also serve four-year terms or serve two-year terms. So those are all the options.
Madam Mayor, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
You know, we asked the citizens of the town to vote on this four, five years ago, I guess it was. And they unanimously voted it down. So we know what they would like. They want two-year terms. And I think we work for them. And I think we ought to stick with what they want in this case.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, okay.
Is there a way, can we do a staggered two-year term? Like, no, it's only a four?
Statute only allows you to serve two-year terms or four-year terms. The only real way to stagger it is to do.
Four years too.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And the other factor here is pursuant to the statutes, you really are stuck with the odd years unless you get special legislation.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
It's like Commissioner Legg just said, the citizens spoke. In reference to this, well, we voted, should I say. And we actually opened up the floor, what the board, the commission did, opened up the floor for the citizens coming forward to town to speak if they want to be in favor or against this. And I think we should utilize the same approach we did last time, at least give the citizens opportunity to come before the board and present their feelings on this particular issue, you know.
I will note that what this is reporting tonight is just a resolution of intent to say that we're going to look into doing this. It still would have a public hearing that would occur where citizens could voice their opinion on this. And if you did adopt it, there is also a provision in the statute that allows a group of citizens to put a petition together to prevent the board from doing a bottom vote.
Okay.
There are avenues here for public input on this.
Right.
If you proceed to.
So what if we need to do a dis- then?
Well, if you want to pursue that path and go towards the public hearing, you would adopt the resolution of intent and then set a date for a public hearing.
Okay.
Madam Mayor. Yes.
The proposal that went before, it was not staggered terms. It was just for everybody on the board to have four years. It was not.
It was staggered.
Was a staggered terms, yeah.
It was the same proposal.
Yes.
But it was, and it was staggered. And that term, the way that one was written was three would run, the mayor would run with two for four years, and then the three highest vote getters were running for four. So what would happen would be you would, the first go around, I think the first go around, the mayor and two, the two highest vote getters would be four-year terms. And then the next two years, the ones that didn't get the highest vote would run. And the top three vote getters would take the seats for four years. And that was the way, and we probably can go back and pull that resolution the way it was written.
It's very similar.
It's same, it's same, about the same.
And what I think, a personal opinion would be that if we do the hearings and get public input, that would probably be, could make the decision. Because we did have, I don't know the total number that came out and voted, but we had one of the largest turnouts for that vote because it was attached to another, it wasn't one of our election years. I mean, what I'm saying, I don't think it was an election year for us. I think it was an off year.
It was an off year.
And we had more people come out for that than for some other things. So I, you know, if you're going to adopt a resolution tonight, then what we need to do, that resolution would be, could be determined after the hearing. You know, so I mean, you wouldn't be saying, this is what you're going to do. This is going to be saying, this is what we propose.
Madam Mayor, can I just say a comment? Because I, I mean, when you read resolution intent, and if the public hears that, they're like, oh, well, screw it. Town's already decided, well, now they're going to, you know, listen to us wherever we say. It doesn't seem, it's, from the outside looking in, it looks like, like we're doing it without their input regardless.
So.
Yeah. So I'm kind of wary of saying, you know, voting for a resolution of intent because it, it's more like information gathering, I guess.
Well, actually, this is like what it is though. And the word intent is the intent to open it up for a discussion to see what direction we're going to go in. And I'm all in favor of that, you know, and with the condition that the public do and how the opportunity to present their opinion on this particular subject. And I think that that's the only way, the most effective way for us to do it, like we did the last time. We opened up to the public, the public came before they spoke and they put it on the ballot and a vote was made.
Now, this would not be on the ballot. This would just.
Unless a petition with the report of voters filed a petition and then it would go.
Okay.
But if you agree to the first sentence of this, just to clarify, all you're doing tonight is resolving to consider.
Okay.
What that means is you're, is the first step towards making of a dis, adopting this resolution does not mind any way, shape, or form to adopting staggered terms. It just allows, you're saying, we're going to consider it and part of that consideration is going to be a public hearing. So the votes actually moved to staggered terms would be after a public hearing down the road.
And so the one that you're recommending would be the one that's on the second one.
Right.
Which would be the.
The 3-2.
The three, the 3-2.
Madam Mayor, I've stated before, I was one of the people that was not in favor of this before. But now, being more educated, being more exposed to other people in other municipalities and other states, and serving on the board myself, I feel differently now. I feel like it's hardly anything accomplished in two years. I think that it's expensive. And I don't think that it could, I think if we did the four-year, it could be more attractive for more people to run for office because it's not like we have a long list of people that seem to be interested in running for office. So to me, it is more attractive if we do it that way. So I was one of the people that felt that way, but I have a change of heart. So I'm in favor of moving forward with a resolution of intent and going through the process to let the citizens speak about it again.
Yes, sir. Do you want to say?
So I, you know, obviously, I didn't know any persons on the council that knows that we're on tour. But, you know, being in the school of government class, Mr. McLaughlin and I are taking that in this state and most of municipalities across the state do not have all two-year terms at the same time. There's a good reason most of them are not doing that, the longevity and having a staggered four years. It does, it does take some learning and some education and time to get acquainted for new people. And their recommendation is going to four-year staggered terms. The council previous, when I was hired, they said, you know, they did go to the voters, they did ask them about this. And chances are, I was probably more about the candidates and the people that constituted the board than the technical issue of having the four-year longer terms. It was more probably about the individuals, maybe not. But you can pass it by referendum yourselves and approve this. It does not have to go to the voters. And the voters can do a petition and put that issue on the ballot. Our issue is, so if we don't get that started and start the process, we won't be ready before the election timeframe when the citizens could give the petitions and put it on the ballot again. So it's a direction to staff to bring this forward and that's.
And just to clarify the timing aspect of this, the public hearing has to take place within at least 10 days from now, but not more than 45 days. And then you have 60 days following the public hearing, you have to wait to adopt it. So by the time you have the public hearing, wait 60 days to adopt it, you're up against already trying to make sure that the ballots are.
But that's only if we vote to adopt it, correct?
Yes, but.
But if you do, you know, you're not going to be able to adopt it for, you know, about three months. So at that point, we're already into the time.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I understand what you're saying, but one thing I will not do is I will not take that choice away from a citizen to get up and be vocal and state how they feel about something like that. Now, I don't know if we can do it within that timeframe, but the citizens at least need to have that opportunity to let us know if that's the direction they wants to go in.
I guess that would happen in the 60 days, wouldn't it?
The 45 days has to be.
Public hearing, if you adopt the resolution of intent tonight, you have to wait at least 10 days. But it's probably just the next meeting. Or you could have it a month from now to make sure you have a nice public hearing, make sure.
A month from now?
You have to do it within 45 days.
So the February 6th meeting?
So we could do it in the February 6th meeting and be okay.
Okay, that's good.
And after the public hearing, you cannot actually adopt it until 60 days is passed.
That'll put us in the window.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I believe that that would give opportunity to advertise it. And we would have another board meeting to let people, you know, that are listening to us live to know about it too. We need to get the information out though, because it really did have a lot of interest before. And that would be, we need to just make sure we trigger that same input. And some of them may be like mayor pro tem. They may have changed their opinions since that time, so.
And part of the benefit of the 60-day period is even if someone can't make the public hearing, there are several meetings that they can come to and express their golfing concerns before it actually gets adopted.
And what's the number of people that have to be on a petition if you, if they were to present a petition? I know that's always been asked.
I should know that. Yeah.
Is it voting population or is it?
Registered voters, yes, registered voters.
I think the last time I checked, it was what, we're hitting close to 12,000 registered voters, I think. We're less registered voters than we actually are population. But I'm not sure the total.
10% of the whole number of registered voters.
1,200 then. About 1,200.
I believe it's 1,200 and something, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Okay.
So that would give them, we could also let them know that upfront, that that is, if there is a concern that they have. And that's, that's not.
And what that will do is take the issue and put it on the next ballot.
Yeah, okay. Okay. All right, do we have anyone that would like to make the motion that we do a resolution of intent with setting the hearing date as February the 6th?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any other discussion? We're going to do the one that's on the backside, the one that's.
Three months for staggered terms.
The staggered terms, it's the, I guess it's the.
It's the staggered term.
Yeah, it's the one that's got a lot of writing at the bottom.
The one with all the crazy names.
Yes.
I think the board can wait until you adopt the final petition to decide on the two for, for the mayor, unless the board must have made that decision, put it in the ordinance. Because what you're really doing is saying, this is the ordinance amendment that we're considering. And I think the way we got it in there is we're considering either two or four. I think that decision can be made later unless.
Okay. No need to.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed? Tab 3-2. So we'll have a hearing on February 6th. All those opposed, it's have three-two, so we'll have a hearing on February sixth. Okay, all righty then. All right, next thing on our agenda is. Chancellor's coming up, so it must be him. Case ZNG dash zero sixteen dash twenty-two rezoning of nineteen point nine five acres from PND Plan Neighborhood Development to R five single-family residential CZ conditional zoning or to a more restricted zoning district located seven hundred and twenty-nine feet from the southwestern intersection of Golf U Road and Sussex Drive, submitted by CMR Capital LLC on behalf of GMR Capital LLC owner. And I will turn it over to Mr. McLaughlin.
I won't go into the presentation again, but, uh, the reason why we're here tonight is at December fifth hearing, uh, this case was considered with, uh, recognition of approval from the planning board, recognition of staff. Um, there was a motion to approve the case, but there was a question about a condition. And that's why we defer into tonight, the condition was whether or not, there were some concerns from neighborhood about privacy fence in the Gulf Acres community. Uh, but because this is a conditional zoning, the applicant wasn't present last month to accept that condition. So what you have in your packet is the email confirmation from the applicant that they are okay with that condition. So that's what we're here, uh, to see what I would.
My question is that what I've heard from the two gentlemen that spoke, uh, and what I've heard from some of the emails that we've received is they're interested in a sound barrier type fencing rather than just a barrier fence like a, a privacy fence. So I, I don't know if that makes a difference.
I would say, um, and just in my professional opinion, I don't think that's, uh, the zoning ordinance sets for the type of fencing that would be considered privacy. Sound barriers are what you typically see on freeways. And so while there will be increased traffic, we're talking about the entrance off of Golf U. The area that you're putting the fence along Golf, you know, along the Golf Acres community, I don't understand where there's a sound issue with cars. Like the only portion of the development that is along Golf U would be the buildings. So I don't think a sound barrier would be inadequate. I don't think that there will be a sound issue generated just from the development being there. Typically, you'd see sound barriers like, uh.
Kindwood Lakes, the one that's on Elk Road, yeah.
Cause it's Elk Road. And so, um, I don't think that a sound barrier would be adequate to address, uh, any concerns. I don't think sound would be an issue from cars from the way that the site is set up and, and the site. Because that portion of Golf U is lined with buildings and anything, three-story apartments probably create an indirect sound barrier because of the buildings that are being lined to that portion of the.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I think several years ago when DOT was putting this project together, the road expansion, they did do an impact study, uh, about the, um, future traffic and, uh.
And I, I'll jump on that too. Typically, uh, there are systems of checks and balances and I always speak to this in the zoning code and the stormwater ordinance. When you're talking about waters that are being received, especially with DOT. DOT typically isn't going to deny eight requests for a driveway permit. They're gonna put together what we call a rope diet. But there are systems of checks and balances in place if there is a certain increase in traffic. If it's a certain level, it triggers a traffic impact study that's required to be paid for by the developer side. If anything higher than that, it may trigger a traffic fight. DOT determines from the analysis of the number of units, these are the things that would need to be put in place by the developer to adequately address those things. If you look in your staff report, there is a low, a laundry list of improvements. Now, DOT determines what that is. I wanna make sure we reiterate that zoning is not intended to address traffic issues. But what we do with zoning is we coordinate with DOT to find out what their pulse is. What they indicated is, uh, I think it's a hundred and forty-foot, uh, deceleration lane, right-way dedications, right turn in, right turn out. That's for this project. That is gonna be required in addition to the massive DOT project that they're doing to widen Golf U, uh, road to two lanes on each side. So while someone brought up the fact that FAMPA did indicate the, uh, Golf U was at capacity, that's why they're generating, they're doing the project. So DOT has deemed that their massive wide hook golf, in addition to the required improvements that they're required for this project, is adequate enough to address the increased traffic for this development. But I wanna reiterate, zoning is meant to address land use, lot sizes, setbacks, things of nature. We aren't the entity to address traffic concerns. We coordinate with the jurisdictional authority figures that do have that to make sure we're at least facilitating that as being addressed. But we have to caution ourselves by using traffic issues as a means to analyze, uh, analyze a request for zoning district. But I will say that we did actually reach out to DOT, we got that information. But they are the ones that determine what needs to happen with this development to address those concerns.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. McLaughlin?
Essentially, uh, it keeps, uh, planning's hands from getting dirty with DOT. It's, I mean.
I wouldn't say it like that, um, if we're talking about stormwater. I can't actually go into a zoning case and make a determination on stormwater ponds. The stormwater ordinance makes that determination. Now, there are times where we're all working together if we have an industrial development that's in the Overlake, airport Overlake district. That triggers no standing water in the stormwater ordinance. So I can't make the pond issue a crucial aspect of my zoning analysis. And it's the same thing that applies to traffic. So we coordinate with those outside agencies to make sure that the projects that are being addressed properly. But I have to pause at using another jurisdictional ordinance to factor into my analysis because my analysis is limited and just an analysis on its own.
I, I understand what you're saying, I mean, yeah, I understand.
And I know that this is a different group that's doing this from the group that had this site plan previously, is that true? Same group?
Um, he has, uh, I guess I can say this, but Mr. Huff is partnering with him for this, but, um, it's still that same.
Same group, cause I just, I was curious about the change in the site plan.
Change was rooted from, uh, I think Mr. Huff came in and, and I will say this is a pretty, um, high-end development. I don't think it'll be something that's in the neighborhood. I think, uh, they indicated that the, uh, clubhouse would be almost a million dollars. They have electro, electronic charging stations, um, as opposed of it. They're actually working, trying to work with NC State to get a nature preserve as a part deal and enhance the golf course. So there are some things that I do think that, um, Mr. Huff brought to the elevated the quality of it. But that was probably why they did the design.
Any other questions? Let's go ahead.
Um, there's only gonna be, from, from looking at the, the site plan, there's only gonna be one entrance on the Golf U?
One entrance on Golf U, if you look, there's a, uh, Hammerhead on the southwestern portion that they're working with, uh, the adjacent property owner and us to talk about the secondary entrance.
Okay.
Uh, but that's required by the wire code.
Is it over by the pond area? Well, you don't have the map up there.
Yeah, look, um, it's basically this portion.
Okay, yeah.
Here, um, that is the area they designate that serves as a secondary entrance to provide a secondary, uh, and that's required by the wire code.
And how many units are they looking?
Three hundred and something. I know that, uh, lady I was emailing back, Buck was talking about twenty-nine units. That's the maximum allowable, that's not what they actually do, twenty-nine units an acre yield about eight hundred. So that's what they would allow to do.
How considerate.
Madam Mayor, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
It was my understanding that, excuse me, that when that property was given to the town, it would be strictly for parks and recreation.
I don't think the town owns this piece of whatever.
How are they gonna get to it? How are they gonna get to it, through our property?
The act, the act, the, the access that's being designed now is off of Golf U.
Okay, you go off of Golf U, where you gonna go, in the creek bed or the property, that's what I'm asking.
I don't, I don't think I understand.
Well.
Commissioner Legg, they actually have an easement.
They do a small easement.
That, but that has been determined that it's large enough for a driveway.
Yes.
For one. You gotta have two, correct?
Yes.
Of course, the other one gonna be?
The other one is on the southwestern portion of the site.
Okay, is that, they own that property?
The property adjacent to them, they're working with the adjacent, uh, property owner to facilitate, um, the secondary entrance for this particular property.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that they're not gonna be adding additional traffic across the golf course, the same it was, it would be Crampton. Uh, that would add additional traffic there. Uh, if they don't have the proper easements to get in there, it looks to me like they're landlocked. Am I right or wrong?
I'm not understanding the, the, uh, my question.
Sounds like they do have one easement and they're working on getting a second.
They don't, they don't have an easement, they have a piece of property.
They were actually, yeah.
They have a twenty-foot span that comes to Golf U.
Yeah, when they, when that, yeah, when that piece of property was purchased by the YMCA originally, then because it was gonna be used for ball fields and other things, the, at the current, the piece beside it at that time was actually had a clubhouse and was a part of the golf course. So the, the property was actually purchased for them to have that driveway. So it's, that's their driveway. And if you'll notice, what I was looking at here, it looks like what they're gonna be doing is making a split in it up at the, the mouth of it so that you'd have it, could, you know, you'd go two different directions. And you, and if you'll recall, um, Mr. George Bajorn, that owns the other thirty acres, um, that's who we were trying to be in conversation with previously, so. But they do, um, Commissioner Legg, they do have that property that is theirs. Um, but that was the concern previously was having another driveway out on Golf U.
Now, that piece of property that they own, that comes from the back to Golf U, is, uh, before we blocked Crampton, that's where that, that runs into that twenty-foot piece of land. And my question was, where's the other one? And you said they're working with the, a property owner.
When that initially had the blue plan, uh, design, uh, Mr. Bajorn and the town was working with the developer about. And it's always been, uh, need for a secondary entrance, that's something that hasn't changed at all. When we're talking with Mr. George about secondary entrance. What happens is what the mayor's talking about is the post YMCA, secondary interests are gonna kick in. Secondary interests kick in, you know, residential. So when they purchased the property and they moved to developing with resident users, that's what keeping that required. So even from the very beginning, we talked to Mr. George and us about, uh, split or something like that because we need, uh, secondary entrance for a different reason and so did, um, this development. So they're still having those conversations, but, um, those are all.
I have a question.
Okay.
So, okay, they're requesting R five and it, I, in your little snippet for staff recommendation, it's in harmony with the overall surrounding area. That's not necessarily, uh, you're talking about three hundred units in one small area, that's not necessarily in harmony. Are we able to change the zoning instead of R five to a, no? So it's either approved or not approved?
That's great, cause this is a conditional zoning.
Gotcha.
We've been on this road before.
I hate zoning.
If it's, if they, if they, their concern I'm sure is, what would happen if it's left at the current zoning? Then the max that they can build there would be?
It would probably, uh, I can't do something in my head, it would be lower because R seven five has a lower density, um, threshold. But, um, the R five is a viable zoning district that a citizen who purchases a property has the right to apply. And then the email to Mrs. Garcia, I indicated the max that's allowed for density. And they're not even anywhere close to that. And so, um, the density issue is always gonna be a question when you're doing apartments, um, doesn't matter where you are. And so what I've always reiterated is the systems of checks and balances in the zoning code and all of our ordinances are meant to make sure that if we're gonna recommend approval, it's gonna be something that at least addresses the parameters that we set for. And once we have a system of rules and regulations put in place and we have a development that meets those regulations, it becomes challenging to find a way to deny it when everything you're looking at shows it's in compliance. And so that's where it gets a little dicey, where you have a developer who purchases a piece of property and hoping to move it forward, put a significant amount of regulations in place that meet every single one of them. And at that point, I'm compelled, or at least I'm gonna more than likely move to recommend approval. You guys have the burden of making that decision. I'm explaining why the recommendation based on my analysis is for approval, um, and it's recommended for approval in the platform.
I have one more comment, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
So looking at the school system, I mean, okay, so the max capacity for Rockfish is seven ninety-nine, six eighty for Hope Mills Middle, Southview High School eighteen seventy-one. Give or take, we're just under two hundred students. And you're talking about three hundred, uh, capacity apartment buildings and that's not including the other ones that are gonna be put off of, um, Elk Road. So we're gonna hit max capacity on these schools and then what we're gonna do.
Well, we can't make that.
I know, we can't, we can't think about that stuff.
Okay.
Cause I talk about every aspect of these projects ad nauseam. We are growing so fast that the issue is not the capacity. The school systems are getting ready to green light New Century High School simply because of what we're doing in the, uh, uh, um, Rockfish Road area by, uh, Millstone and, uh. So what happens is we keep a pulse on the school system in DOT because they need a pulse with us because we don't determine if the issue is at capacity with the schools. We share that information so that they can determine, you know what, we might need to green light another middle school, we might need to green light another high school. So I try to tell people, we coordinate very, very well with all of these agencies. Um, at the very beginning of any project, we send out a request for comments. That goes out to every agency in the region from the very beginning. So by the time we're here, it's not necessarily whether I think Seaway and Caria is gonna have an issue. We feed the data to Cumberland County Schools so they can say, you know what, we're getting very close to capacity. They've been at capacity from the high school area by the Jack Britter for quite some time. Um, that's why you're hearing rumblings, you have New Century Elementary and Middle. From what I'm hearing, with the massive amount of development we're doing on that side, they're possibly gonna green light another high school. But they make that determination based on the data that we give them, uh, coordinating these projects.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
In other words, we, we trigger the change. They're not gonna just build the school because we have some land and we might have some more kids. This stuff, we, we drive the change.
We have, we're driving that change.
And illegally, if these people have met the requirements, just because we don't like it, we can't say no.
I tell you that, that, you know, you really can't consider the schools.
Right.
You know, in your decision on whether to grant or do not this particular request because that's separate apart from the issue of what's going on.
All right, I'm good.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
There's no other discussion I would like to, I don't have to read this out as written in the packet. I would like to recommend, um. So I need to read all of it into the minutes.
Yes, ma'am. Yep, cause.
And, and mention the, uh.
Southwest Cameron Land.
A, B, A, B, and C?
Yeah, I don't know if I put.
Yes, and that's. Oh, no, then fence not in there.
Yeah, so mention when you read, uh, the motion, just kinda make reference to that policy that's there.
Second page. Second page, man.
Under, under relevant conditions, I think it's, what, thirty-one?
Yes.
Or no? Site related number thirty-one.
Site related thirty-one?
A six-foot privacy fence shall be installed along a portion of development border.
Okay, um, the board of, uh, with the, I'll read the whole thing. With the Town of Hope Mills planning staff recommending approval of this request were recommendations of approval, as well as from Cumberland County Joint Planning Board on November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, in case ZNGG zero sixteen twenty-two, the Town of Hope Mills Board of Commissioners move for approval of the rezoning request from PND Plan Neighborhood Development to R five CZ Residential District Conditional Zoning and Fines. A, the approval is an amendment to the adopted Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan, twenty thirteen map, to accommodate R five CZ requests. And the Board of Commissioners should not require any additional requests or application for amendment to said map. This request, B, the following change in conditions was considered an amending in zoning ordinance, zoning map to meet the development needs of the community. As a high-density residential land use designation does not contemplate the facilitation of residential development, a multifamily residential use is compatible with the residential development on the existing adjacent parcels. Approval of this request is reasonable and in public, as in, and in the public interest as proposed. Use will be in harmony with the overall surrounding area, will be in line with existing, existing surrounding zoning, and because the site has access to public utilities, and we are including a privacy fence that the site stated in site plan related number thirty-one, did I say that right?
Close enough.
Yes, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
I got something, ma'am.
Okay.
I just wanna be clear that, you know, just like Dr. McCray stated before she made the motion, I mean, and like Chance said legally, I mean, we can't deny it just because we didn't like it. We did get a fence put up to provide some kinda separation for the homeowners over there, but, you know, that's where we stand, so.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, so it'll be four to one in favor of, thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda is new business, consideration of resolutions R twenty twenty-three dash oh one, setting a public hearing for annexation A twenty twenty-two dash oh seven, and this is behind tab eight. And that would be, um, any questions about that? Main thing is, is property Crosspoint Church, be the annexation in of that? So, you're gonna, someone make a motion to set the hearing up for our January twenty-third meeting at seven?
I make that motion.
Have a motion, set a public hearing? Got a second, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed, thank you. Consideration to authorize town manager to execute a contract with alter grading to relocate the backflow preventer outside the NC DOT right away, and this is behind tab nine. And is there any?
Make that motion.
Thing you need to tell us about it?
Oh, nah, backflow's required, there's no choice of that.
Is required, okay. So, make that motion for-
Make that motion.
Second.
Okay, have a motion to authorize the town manager to execute a contract with alter grading. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Next is consideration of stormwater program updates.
When is this required?
We got somebody coming to the, coming to the well to talk to us about it.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, this is just an update for stormwater planning here. We're, uh, this is a discharge and detection program, hasn't been done in some years, in which we'll remove any excess paperwork and have a more efficient process. Um, we're gonna start to do permanent cycle before too long, and that'll allow, um, to start that. Annette Lucas, who works for McAdams, she's over to receive this update, and she used to be over all the stormwater programs for the state, and that's how she was selected to do this. And it's with state funding.
So, this is funded by the state?
Yes.
Okay, wait, that's a no brainer.
You took my ears. So, I think the main thing we need to hear is just approve the proposal to update and allow you to-
There's actually a resolution attached.
Yes. No problem.
Okay.
I will.
Find that resolution.
It's right here, it's right here.
You wanna make that motion?
I make that motion with the resolution.
Okay, go right ahead.
Second. They're gonna read it?
You know, read it. Do we need to read the resolution in, or just say that the resolution- Twenty-three dash zero three?
Yes.
Have, have a motion to approve-
Second.
And have a second, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. All right, next thing we have is consideration of naming delegate for North Carolina League Municipal Legislative Agenda Update. I think there was a little bit of confusion about this. What this is, is they send us the list of all the top priorities, and then we select ten, and we just go in the computer and we submit our ten. And I know when they submitted it, they, um, Ms. Starling asked about the, who would do that? And she said the mayor normally does it, and there was some thoughts that maybe somebody else might want to do it. I have no problem with that, all you do is they just say that you're gonna be the one to push it in the computer. So, if anybody would like to do this, but the main thing is, if you've looked at them, Commissioner Mitchell has handed me his, what he thinks would be his top ten. And basically, it's coming from all municipalities that are members of the league. So, it ends up that we may end up with these particular ten, or it might be that the others pick something else, and we end up with something that we didn't put in, but they prioritize them by picking out the top ten.
Madam Mayor, since Commissioner Mitchell's so far ahead of us on that, why don't I him do it?
I wish I would.
Push the button.
Would you like to be sent in as our delegate, sir?
Absolutely not.
Don't worry, we're professionals.
Yeah, enough on my plate already.
Mayor-
Woody? Yes, sir?
I'll get, I'll make a motion to name Mayor Warner to serve as the NCLM voting delegate while receiving input from the Board of Commissioners.
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion, a second, any other discussion? Yes.
Are we gonna, like, go over, like, which ten do we want, or?
Just, it's just a matter of you selecting your ten, and then I can compile them. And like, I've got Commissioner Mitchell's, if you wanna just, you can email it to me.
He was extra, yeah.
Yeah.
I emailed it to you, to be-
Well, I can take, I'll take paper copy, and I'll use this to tally them. Because I have a motion that I remain, or I am the delegate to put this in, and we just need the information in by the twelfth. So, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed, okay? The next item on our agenda is, um, okay, the next item is item E, discussion of sales tax interlocal agreement extension. And I sent you all this information because we met on Friday, the mayor's coalition met. And the reason that this is an important thing for Hope Mills is that we currently are under an agreement, an interlocal agreement, that expires June thirtieth. And I sent you also a, sort of a spreadsheet that was provided to the county commissioners on showing what the difference would be with per capita or ad valorem. And if you notice, the Town of Hope Mills, if they were to make the decision to go to ad valorem for our twenty twenty-four budget, we would actually lose one million eight hundred fifty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. And the thought was, when we did the original agreement that was approved, it was really, it was done in twenty eighteen, but it wasn't signed to twenty nineteen, so it was actually, it was five years, but it was a four-year, the way it looked on paper. The thought was that we might, by the time we got to this point, be ready to see how we could adjust. Well, in our particular case, over time, we probably will be better with per capita, if we had to go that route. I mean, go with ad valorem, but right now with per capita, we stand in a better situation because the fact that we went through COVID, the hurricanes, all the things that we had going on, and that's affected all the small towns too. If we were to lose that amount of money, I asked our finance director how it possibly could impact us, and he gave me, he said, well, you could look, be looking at losing thirty employees. If you wanted to look, the quickest way to cut, so that we would lose a lot of amenities. You didn't want him to say that, did you? Gee, that's awful.
No, no, that's good.
But the thing about it is, you have to look at it as, how would we, how would we make up that difference? And so, the mayors voted unanimously, and that's every mayor, all municipalities, to include Mayor Colvin. And what we decided was that we would request to extend the interlocal agreement for five years, and that we would keep ourselves under the same current interlocal agreement. The only thing we're doing is adding an addendum. We did have current, our attorney Hart Sog to take a look at it, to make sure that it was okay. Because when the original agreement was drawn up in twenty eighteen, it was each town attorney, along with the county attorney, had to check it out, make sure it was okay and agreeable. We're not changing that agreement, we're just extending it. So, we will present each town at their meetings in January, we'll, we'll present this to their commissioners for a vote. Then, there's a signature page that will be submitted. All the mayors will then meet on February the third, inviting the county commissioners to that meeting, and we'll present it to them at that time. If you did see City View Magazine today, you will notice that in there, one of the priorities that they have was a consideration of going to ad valorem taxes. So, we're trying, the mayors are trying to get ahead of this, so that that way they'll know that we're not interested in doing that, and especially not at this time.
Do we need to make a motion?
And the, and the other thing would be, property evaluations are coming up, reavows. There's so many things that are in the future, five years, that we know that things could change, but right now, we can't afford to lose that much money, so, questions?
Do we need to make a motion?
Have to make a motion to approve the, entering into an extension of the current interlocal agreement.
I make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Okay, have a motion-
I'd like to second that.
Have a motion, a second, any other discussion or questions?
I just got a comment, there's, there's no way at this point we could lose one point nine million. I mean, that's, that's a no-brainer to us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, looking at Spring Lake, they were very concerned, because Spring Lake would be losing a million five. And they can't, they, there's no way they can make it up at all, so. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. And we'll get this signed, Jane, so that we can, our official date will be today. All right, the next thing on our new business, consideration of Public Safety Center Construction Loan Extension. And I'll turn this over to Mr. Holland.
Okay. Um, just got this, and the reason we had to add it at the last minute was, I just got the copy of the agreement today. This is a change we're having to make to the construction loan, had to extend it. As you can tell, the project is not completed. USDA cannot pay off the construction loan to make it the loan to pay off until the building is complete. We added this parking lot here, that's gonna extend the timeframe to March. And the building itself is not, phase three is not done yet. The good news is, police department has moved in fully, fire is probably seventy-five to eighty percent of the building. So, in order to do that, we're going to extend it until May the nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three. And that date, while we're using that, that is the date of the, when the temporary, um, what's it called?
TCO?
The TCO, what's the C? Certificate of Rock, let's see, that's it, it's left on that. That's when the TCO expires, on May the nineteenth. So, we thought, let's go ahead and extend the loan to that date, because we know it has to be completed by that time. We're not going to go past that. So, USDA had to request it, we've got LGC is going to approve it, they're meeting tomorrow, but we need the council's approval as well. So, that's what we're asking for, to extend it from January seventh to May the nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Mayor, make a motion that we extend that.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion or questions? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Uh, the next item on our agenda, thank you, sir, appreciate it. Next item on our agenda would be our manager's report. Does anyone have any questions about the manager's report, or about, um, any additions that you might have, sir?
I would mention that town staff has stated that they are not gonna drop the lake down because of the lack of moisture, just in case you had questions regarding the current, we haven't had any major issues to compare to.
And did you see the fish that was caught this weekend?
Oh, yes, the catfish.
Yeah, fifty-pound catfish. I wonder if it's our catfish that lived down by the, the, you know, the puddles that were down around the dam before we started replacing. We had a whole bunch of catfish down there that were, that lived in the creek, that were still there when it ended. Yeah, but that one, that was, but anyways, fifty pounds.
Maybe he climbed up the ladder, that would-
Let him climb the ladder. Uh, any, any questions, okay?
Yeah, question, I see the, um, the splash pad and inclusive playground revising drawings from the town stormwater department. So, we still on track to have a splash pad and playground by summer?
We should be, um, one of the problems was they laid it out in too much close proximity to the wells that we use for irrigation. And we don't wanna not have the free water from those irrigation wells to do the fields, so they had to relocate that, which took some design movement.
So, we still gonna be splashing in the summer?
Equipment's here, we should be, construction should commence like in another couple weeks, two or three weeks.
All right.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Okay.
Do we have any update of the ribbon cutting for the basketball court? With the, 'cause I know the paint was still wet.
Yeah.
So, Lamarcus left already, I'm not, they are revisiting the date for that, as well as on the chapel opening. Um, there's a few punch list items, we do have a CO on that building. So, we'll be reaching out for a date to come over those.
How about next door?
So, that, the date for the grand opening is March third, um, that was decided by-
March third? Yeah, I think so.
Do we have a time yet for that, or just?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
If it's cool, late morning.
We don't wanna say they're ahead of schedule on the parking lot, but they're ahead of schedule.
Well, you said it, yeah, there you go.
Let's don't talk about that.
We wouldn't have a place to park right now.
Yeah.
I have one on anything like tonight, and then we'll show up.
Don't rush them, just let them do it right.
I did have-
Okay, go ahead.
-a concern, but, um, Lamarcus is not here. About the, uh, 'cause I was contacted by some citizens about the, um, the contract with TJ Robinson Center. Are we gonna have any issues with that, given the recent events?
With this sexual thing?
Yeah.
Those are, when the damage spread better, see, but those are allegations and, and, so, we don't, I, I personally don't feel like that's a major problem.
She'll have an impact on us, no way.
Madam Mayor, I had some people come to me earlier this evening, they said all of our telephone numbers were not listed on our webpage. All the commissioners' numbers.
Yes, sir, I sent everyone an email and explained that.
Yes, you did.
I could back home for you if you want. They're add, uh, replace, Commissioner Squirrel was addressed today, I replaced everybody's phone number with the town hall.
This was, you said, right.
One more phone call won't hurt me, I get about twenty robo calls a day.
I could put it back home for you.
I think the citizens of Hope Mills should have contact information for us and the staff.
Maybe everybody look at what's on the website, and then just let us know if you want it.
Yeah, let me know if you want to recheck this.
Well, I had an earlier meeting next door, and someone brought it up over there, that some of our numbers were not listed on the website. Did you take it off there, Greg?
I sure did.
Oh, you're good.
And sunrise service, Easter sunrise service. If we, we need to make sure we get that scheduled, it'll be, it'll be at the lake on Easter morning.
Christ, we're getting ahead there, aren't we, getting things on schedule?
It's wet, yes.
I, I just know that they've got the Easter in Hope Mills for March twenty-fifth. I just didn't want it not to, to be on the calendar, so people know that, that we're gonna, it is taking place. Yeah, that, it's just the town is doing something, some kind of event, and hitting on March twenty-fifth. Yeah, no, do you know what that is?
March twenty-fifth?
That's what it says, on the upcoming events.
That's a sidebar conversation.
Okay, we can look at that. All right, any other, anything else you want on that, we're good at the team? All righty, our, um, next meeting is January twenty-third. Our pre-budget meeting for dinner meeting is January twenty-fifth. Martin Luther King's birthday is this Monday coming up, and we do have a representation from our town that will be- Martin Luther King's birthday is this Monday coming up, and we do have a, a representation from our town that will be there. Um, and, uh, is there anything else that we need that's happening anytime soon? Okay, anything from the staff?
I'd just like to let everybody know, I will be sending out a, um, a public notice with all of our many openings listed.
Okay, quite a few.
Veterans and, uh, HBC and managers, all that, so, so, I'll be sending that out.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead. I have one thing then.
Okay.
They need to reach out to the Veterans Affairs Committee. That fifty thousand dollars will be gone tomorrow if I don't get the, uh, we don't get the proposal. Well, the scope of work, I should say. You know that, you know, the, for the monument? You know what I'm talking about, right?
Yeah, I know what you're talking about, yeah.
They have until, uh, eighteen-thirty tomorrow, which is six-thirty tomorrow night, to have that submitted.
And, and while, and just as a, a comment on that too, I know there's been some concern that the DOT, Drew Cox, actually gave us in writing that they were not going to be affecting the area as they thought previously. I don't know where it has started back up, but some are concerned that they're, I guess because they didn't change anything out there.
Right.
But it's, there, we have it in writing that they're not going to be affecting it. Uh, and I just want to reiterate that because, uh, they didn't come back and remeasure and remark. They just.
It's been the same way, yeah, and that's why I hear them.
So if anybody is concerned, you just let them know that they, in fact, probably could ask DOT if we could take the stuff down to make them feel better, but it's, that, we have it in writing. And I feel comfortable that Mr. Cox is, um.
He stated no, no impact.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn, a second?
We done.
All right, we're.